...Board Meeting, it's a regular Planning Board Meeting and it is Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016, and it is past 6:30 so we can begin our formal agenda. Just a couple things here, there is going to be, under Continued Public Hearings, the Apple Ridge Apartment Continued Public Hearing is going to be moved to the very end of our agenda to accommodate the applicant who is coming up from Manchester and called and asked to have this done. So if anybody is here for that, it just will be at the very end of our agenda. So the first thing we'll do is, let's see, is our Recording Secretary is Kalina Graham, and would you please call the role?
Charlie?
Here.
Michaelani?
Here.
Jay Tippman?
Here.
Mike Delavickian?
Here.
Will Cantardo?
Yep.
Hamilton McLean?
Here.
There, two of our regular members are not with us yet, and generally they're here at the start of the meeting, Don Richards and Jerry, and so what I would like to do, given our chart of the alternates who have voted in the past to equalize out, I would like to ask Michael and Charlie, would you both be full voting members this evening? And given that, we do have a quorum.
Could you please clarify which Michael?
I'm having trouble with his last name.
Amani.
No, no, it's the other Michael.
Oh, the other.
Lamonti.
Thank you.
I only make a mistake about three times and then I eventually learn.
Not E-bones.
Yes, he is, but looking, we keep track of...
I do not fully get it.
Yeah, yes, I do, of who votes and who hasn't, and we try to balance it out. But as you know, you participate fully and all the discussions and your opinions are important. It's just a fairness thing. Okay, let's see, and sitting with us this evening is our interim Planning Director, Brandy Loughlin, and, oh, you're all alone.
All alone.
Okay. Presentations, there's no presentations, no extensions. The first, under our Continued Public Hearings, is application PL-2015-0138-SP, 153 Church Street, Proposal to Demolish Vacant Building and Add Landscaping in Its Place. The agenda says it will be continued to June 1st, and would you like to update us as to why?
This project, I don't know if you guys remember when it first came before us on Busy Corner there, right in front of CVS, CVS has purchased that building that's on the corner, they're planning to demolish it, and their original application was to put a park in that location. Right now, we are waiting to see if that park will be constructed by CVS, or if CVS will demolish the building, stabilize the land, and hand that property over to the city for us to establish a park in that location. So that's still all kind of being worked out behind the scenes.
This is saying, when did they acquire that property?
They, I think they closed on it a month or so ago.
Okay.
Yep.
Put the speakers on.
They are.
They are? Nothing come all over there.
I'll try to speak a little louder.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay.
So that application will be continued to June. You may or might, may not actually see it, if the property is transferred to the city, then at that point it will be a city project and you may see it in a different capacity.
Super, thank you. The Apple Ridge Apartment, that was the one that I just announced we're moving to the end of the agenda, that was Continued Public Hearing Number Two. Continued Public Hearing Number Three is application PL-2016-0016-SU, Provincial Road, MBL 482-160-1, Two-Lot Subdivision, and at the, I understand, at the request of the applicant, it's going to be continued to our June meeting.
That's correct, and the agenda says June 15th, but the meeting will be June 1st.
Excellent. Then we'll move into our public hearing section. The first is application PL-2016-0050-SU, Davis Place, MBL 426-60-2122, and 412-60-59, Boundary Line Adjustment Between the City and a Private Lot. Does the staff represent that the application is complete and ready for hearing?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to accept the application and begin the public hearing?
I move it.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. The motion passes unanimously, we've accepted it. There's, who is going to, are you going to speak for the applicant? Okay?
Yeah, for the record, I'm Frank Yurkies, representing Harry Bean.
Okay.
And we prepared this plan for your review. Basically, Harry purchased Tax Lot 21, and he's in the process of completely renovating an older home that was on that lot, and the city council...
He came before us with that and we approved it, and from the appearance, he's doing an excellent job.
Completely renovating, it's unbelievable. It's like a new house. And Harry, through discussions with city council, proposed to purchase some surplus land of the city, which the council voted to characterize as surplus, and they entered a purchase and sale agreement to merge this land with the existing lot. We're not creating any new lots. Harry's already started cleaning the area up, and it's going to be a big improvement, I think, when it's all said and done. Really, I don't have anything else to add if I answer any questions.
Has the city actually transferred that, the title?
No, it's pending Planning Board approval.
There's no, they can't, they have to do the boundary line adjustment before they can do that.
They can transfer it.
Yep.
But there is a P&amp;S agreement.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Any discussions, any questions of the applicant? And then Brandy, or the city?
Yep, the application was complete. The boundary land adjustment will result in lots that comply with the zoning ordinance and our regulations. Really, the only thing is a very minor typo on the plan that needs to be incorporated as part of a plan revision, one block number on in a butter lot. Other than that, everything is good and in keeping with our ordinance and regulations.
Excellent. I did forget to announce the, that we're opening the public hearing at 6:35, but we're following the procedure. Any questions of the staff at this time? Any questions from a direct of butter to this property? Would they like to address the Planning Board on this application? Yes, sir, could you come forward, please?
A moment, my butter, can I look at the plan?
Sure. Could you just, sir, for our record, just, in speaking into the microphone, as to your name and where you live?
Yes, Gene Raymond, and I own the property on Howard Street, which abuts it.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any taxpayers in Laconia that would like to address the Planning Board on this issue? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing at 6:42.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
For the record, the pins have been set, as noted on the plan, and we did make that correction after the TRC meeting.
Okay.
For the Laconia Housing Development Authority.
Okay. So on the, on the final plans, the...
Yes.
Okay, we'll see that reflected. Thank you.
Any questions of the board? Then I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve this application here, this, I'm looking for the number.
Oh, the staff report, the staff report was prepared by a contract planner that we'll talk about later. So the application number is on the agenda...
Okay.
...instead of on the staff review. I apologize for that.
Here it is.
So that would be...
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. With the following completion dates, June, plan revision, June 1st, 2016, I guess that's been done. Site security, not applicable. Mylar's July 12, 2016, and completion on May 2017. The conditions are as outlined within the report.
So that would include two, three, four, and four?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Is there a second to this motion?
I have a second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, and, thank you, sir. The cleaning up of that area and the work you're doing on that house is dramatically improving the neighborhood, and we thank you very much for it.
I'd like to thank all of you for your time.
I don't think Frank Yurkies going anywhere, we got him again.
He's next again, yep.
He's next again, okay.
He's up the bat again, all right.
Okay, the next is application PL-2016-0055-SU, 16 Race Point Road, MBL 244-295-8 and 9, Boundary Line Adjustment Between the Two Lots. Does the interim director ascertain that the application is complete and ready for public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a motion to accept the application?
Just one, one question, Mr. Chairman.
What is the difference between an application number and MBL number?
The MBL is the map block lot, that's the tax parcel. The application number is something that we just assigned in-house for tracking purposes. So the staff reviews are a little not quite accurate this month, we're working out some kinks right now. So when making your motions, please refer to the agenda for the application number.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just, for the record, it's always better to include more information than, than less.
True, you can always refer to the MBL as well.
Okay. So did we have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion, we accept the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously and we can begin the process. And I will open the public hearing at 6:46. Even I can learn, Kalina. And will the applicant please come forward?
Again, my name is Frank Yurkies, representing Stephen and Ann Wainwright. The Wainwrights bought this home, the pool and concrete patio area were built by a previous owner, and they bought the home without the benefit of a survey, closed on it, and the butters, the Vazinas, bought the lot next door, and I guess brought a consultant in to see what they could do with it, and at that time last year, it was discovered that this encroachment situation existed. So the intent of this plan is to clear up the encroachment and do an equal trade between the two lots. So the areas will be the same after the adjustment as they were, as they are presently. The frontage remains the same, the existing conditions are all shown, the Vazina lot next door is an empty lot. So we're really just going through the exercise here to get this, this matter cleared up.
Do you know how long the pool had been there?
I don't know exactly, to be honest with you, but it was there prior to the Wainwrights' purchase.
Couldn't have been earlier than the 80s when they built it.
Yeah.
The 80s, it could have been, whoa.
Is that like going down that hill, Frank, in that area at the Race Point, you go down that hill on the left-hand side, is that this property? Could you describe that?
Well, as you go up Race Point Road, before you get to the cul-de-sac...
Okay.
...it's on the left. And if you, and if you continued past this property...
Oh, it's around that corner, I see, all right.
Well, it's not really on the corner, but it's...
Well, at the cul-de-sac.
The condominium, Ferncroft condominiums are next to the Vazinas.
Okay.
And the cul-de-sac is here, and the turnoff for Bay Hills is right here.
You can't see that pool from the road, can you?
No.
Okay.
No, it's completely private.
Okay. Any other questions to the applicant, staff?
The boundary line adjustment results in no change to the square footage to either lot, no change to the frontage, they both still meet our zoning requirements as a result of the boundary line change. Really, all this does is rectify the encroachment issue and gives a clearer situation for each of the property owners. There are actually no plan revisions that are required as a result of what we received, so we would recommend approval.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just a question, when you say encroachment, was the pool actually built on the other lot?
Yeah.
The portion of the pool that's shown on the plan was just onto the other lot.
Now, is there, is there a requirement for a certain setback for a pool from the property line?
Ten feet.
Yep.
Ten feet?
Yes.
So you, so the lot line adjustment will allow for that 10-foot...
Yeah, if you look on the plan, we've got a dimension there, it's 10, 10 feet and change.
Got it, okay.
And, and for the record, we've set the pins, as noted on the plan, so...
But they have less room, though, the house.
Good question.
Are there any direct of butters that would like to address the board on this application? Are there any other taxpayers of the City of Laconia that would like to address the board on this application? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing at 6:50. Is there any general discussion to take place before we ask for a motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on this application.
I'll move application PL-2016-0055-SU, the lot line adjustment be approved, subject to number one, project completion deadlines, A, plan revision, June 1, 2016, B, site improvement security, not applicable, C, Mylar final plans, July 12, 2016, and D, completion, May 3, 2017. Number two, plan revisions, none. Number three, other conditions, A, and number four, conditions for final approval. A should be, I don't know if you strike it, he said that the monumentation had already taken place?
Yeah, I wouldn't strike it, I would just leave it.
Okay, so A through, A, B, C, and D, under number four.
Excellent. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say, raise your right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, hope this doesn't happen very often. It's, it's not good to have things like this happen.
No, it was pretty, pretty clear-cut, though, and Frank did a great job figuring out how they could fix it.
Yeah, thank you.
When something like that happens, when there's an encroachment like that, obviously there was not a building permit issued for the pool.
There may have been.
Oh.
And it was not followed up on correctly, or, you know, the installers didn't, you know, put it in the right place, we may not have required a survey afterwards, since we do...
So after the fact, if a, if a part of a structure was constructed without either a permit or a follow-up certificate of occupancy, and then it's determined after subsequent sales that that structure was encroaching or was illegally constructed, what recourse does the city have? Can they have that part of the structure removed?
In this situation, that was a zoning violation. It would be like a zoning violation because it's in the setback.
From, because of the set, because of the side yard requirement.
Yeah, as far as the setback. Now, as far as the portion that went on to someone else's property, that, like, that part would be a civil issue.
But not, not the lack of a certificate of occupancy?
A pool wouldn't require a CO.
No?
No.
Even with electrical and plumbing and all that stuff?
I mean, it would require some kind of final sign-off, but I'm not quite sure. I think it was old enough that, that not, to be honest, the records probably weren't complete for us to be able to track down exactly what happened.
That's where I live.
Well, back in those days, the boundaries were sort of fuzzy, I guess.
This is going to sound self-serving, but it was, the permit was issued without the benefit of a survey.
That's what I was, I know they had to go back and do a lot of the lots back in the day.
It is, yep.
And was there an as-built at all with that, you know?
Not that I'm, I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Well, there would have been for the house, but probably not for the pool.
And there wasn't, there wasn't an as-built for the house either.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, okay, let's live to learn.
I remember, as I say, between those two telephone poles, but the telephone poles will be on, remember?
The third public hearing is application PL-2016-0004-SU, Amendment One, yes, Amendment One. It's for 93 and 109 Weir's Boulevard, MBL 277-248-7 and 8. It's a boundary line adjustment, and will you ascertain that the application is complete and ready for public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Given that, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the application.
I'll make the motion that we accept the application.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Excellent, made in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion, the application is accepted, and I am opening the public hearing at 6:54, and recognizing the, the applicant.
My name is Ron Johnson, I prepared the plan for 109 Weir's Boulevard Trust. We were here in March of this year to get an approval, we began an approval for boundary line adjustment between 109 and 93 Weir's Boulevard. It's the Rich Haven cottages and a single-family property next door, both owned by the same individual. After we set the corners for the adjustment over here, he wanted more of a buffer between the cottage colony and the, and the two other cottages on the private residence property. So we moved the pin five and a half feet.
And he hadn't sold the cottage colony yet, no?
Oh, yeah, it's still for sale. An amount of 83 square feet difference, and we still maintain the two acres on the cottage colony property. So we're back in front of the board for an amendment on the application to swap that 83 feet. The small residential lot is getting an extra 83 square feet, and the cabin colony is losing 83 square feet, which really isn't anything in the big wash, but, so there it is.
Okay. Staff?
So the, the change is, is really minor. It wasn't something that I felt that I could approve administratively, given that subdivision and boundary line adjustments have to be approved by the Planning Board. So it's here before you. It's really just a matter of giving them, as I understand, a little bit extra room so they can get around to the other side of a stone wall for maintenance purposes and still stay on their own property. On the staff review, under plan revisions easements, we have actually received those drafts as required, so when you make your motion, you can strike those if you choose. If you want to leave them in, you know, that's fine, I would just note that, that, that has been satisfied, that requirement has already been satisfied, though.
All those, all those easements?
We did receive them.
Is that between two, is that the same owner or two separate owners?
He owns both properties, the same owner.
Okay. Should you have the documents in, in the application?
We do have them, yep, we have them in our file here, yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, then, any direct of butters that would like to address the board on this application? Any other taxpayer of Laconia that would like to address the board on this application? Seeing none of either, I will close the public hearing at 6:57. Any general discussion that would like to take place before, then I'll ask for a motion from the board on this application?
I'm making the motion that we approve this application, and it's PL-2016-0004-SU, and with the following completion deadlines, easement, plan revision for the easement, June 1, 2016, there's no site improvement required, Mylar, July 17, 2016, and completion May 2, 2017, and, and the conditions that are within the, the, the application here. I don't think there's anything in here that's exceptional, so...
Okay. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The application PL-2016-0056-SP, 55 Growth Road, Lakes Reach and Dog Park, is to be continued until June 1 at the applicant's request. Is there anything further that we should say about this, or do we need more time?
No, actually, we thought we had a very full agenda tonight, and we advised them that...
I'm here, we love the dog park.
I don't have, I don't have a full staff review.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we could move forward, but I don't have a staff review for you guys.
I could give you, I could give you like a little overview, I'm waiting for, if, I'm waiting for John, anyway, on the, on the Apple Ridge one.
Do you guys want to hear a little overview from John?
We need that dog park.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe John can give you guys a preview.
Yeah, why don't you come up and just give us a brief, this doesn't violate any...
Look into a condition, or then based upon...
Um, why don't we do this, why don't you guys accept it? You can open the public hearing, and then you can continue it to June to take that vote.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do you, is the application...
It is.
And then would I have a motion to accept the application?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor to accept? Any opposed? So we have formally accepted the application, and we will open the public hearing, and first ask for the applicant.
John Rokee.
Oh, at...
Oh, at 7 o'clock even.
Okay. John Rokee, Rokee Consulting on behalf of the Laconia Dog Park and the City of Laconia is actually the applicant, because it's, the parcel is owned by the City of Laconia Parks and Rec Department. We have gone to city council, they have, they have vote, actually voted to accept everything and move, move things forward, like there's an agreement with the city council for the dog park. Kevin McGlaughlin is working with, with Ginny Martin and the other, and the other people to get all the agreements and the rules and the insurances and everything in place. The, the site plan itself, I don't, I don't have anything in front of you, but, to put in front of you, but it's off the end of Growth Road, like it's kind of an industrial complex down there. You go down Growth Road, there's a power, there's a dual set of power lines that run right off the end of Growth Road. What I did is I have a driveway that goes just past the power lines, and then I opened it up into just a gravel parking, parking lot, and there's, there's, can be a toilet, like a porta-pot, there's going to be a dumpster, there's a little walkway, probably, it's probably like a 40-foot-long walkway that gets over to the fenced-in areas, and they're actually, they're actually doing it different than what you would think they would do with a dog park, like it's not actually going to be like a graded level site. They're going to clear some trees, like thin the trees out a little bit within the area, but for the most part, it's going to be a natural area that the, that the dogs can run around, like in the woods, basically. So there's not a lot of grading within the, within the fenced-in area. We're just basically going, picking a good path, and it's going to be a meandering fence around through the woods, and then there's going to be a divider in the center, so smaller dogs can be on one side, bigger dogs can be on the other side, and then there's a, a third pen, which is for puppies. But the drainage, it's, it's in kind of an old gravel pit area. I've had Peter Shower go out and do the wetlands, so there's, we know there's no wetlands on the site. I designed it for just an infiltration basin where I, where a sheet blow the parking lot off into the infiltration basin, and I have, and the driveway all goes to the infiltration basin also. And I actually had overdesigned it a little bit when I, I was trying to get everything in for a deadline, and I realized when I ran the drainage calc, said it was way oversized, nothing even came out of the pond. So one of the things I'm working with, Luke Powell, is actually backing the size off a little bit, making it smaller. But there were very few comments with TRC, everybody was, everybody was pretty happy with it, conservation, Luke Powell was fine, there, I think everything was fine with assessing, but that was mostly just for butter notices. All in all, I mean, we have most of the stuff taken care of, I just got a, I cleaned up a couple of the notes, like I, I had a couple things where I had, you know, plagiarized the plans from another project, and I just needed to make sure all the stuff jived with this particular project, which I've already taken care of. sure all the stuff jived with this particular project, which I've already taken care of. And just a final pond size to Luke Powell, and it should be ready for approval with almost no conditions, so.
Wasn't this before us?
Yeah, the, I was going to say, the applicant organization did come before us for a conceptual plan review.
Just conceptual.
It was conceptual. It was a very good discussion that they had began, before they began the whole project. I don't think at that time, they, these pens were going to be left as natural as...
No, no, not at all. It was, it was more, it was more of a, like squared-off thing, where I think it was going to be more grassed and cleared and things like that. But they're modeling it after one in Enfield, I believe, is the one that they're, that they've been using.
Vermont?
No, Enfield, New Hampshire.
Okay, I thought there was one in Vermont they referred to.
Up by Lebanon.
Okay.
This is going to remain a seasonal, a seasonal park, or will it be open year-round?
It's, if they can be open year-round, they're going to try to, but there's, there's a lot of maintenance issues with the plowing of the roads and parking and everything else. They do, they did get a grant, I think you probably saw it in the paper. They got a, I think it's $100,000 grant, or a donation from a local person. $50,000 of it is to construct it, and $50,000 is like a trust fund to, like oversee maintenance going forward in the future, so.
Will, will it continue to be a city recreational facility?
It's still, it's still going to be owned by the city, but it's all the maintenance and all the insurances and everything else are taken care of by the dog park.
It'll be, I mean, the way it's been established is somewhat similar to what they've done for the WOW Trail, where they've got the nonprofit that kind of came up with the plans and the money, but it's city property, or it will become city, that kind of thing. So, not quite exactly the same, but...
Ultimately, the city stands behind it.
I think we had to get resolved back then was the parking for that, didn't we? Yeah, what did that turn out to be with your final plan?
Well, the park, the parking on the concept plan was right underneath the power lines, and there was, I think Jenny was going to try to meet with Eversource, but they, there was like no way we were going to get a joint use agreement to have all the parking right underneath the power lines. So, I just extended the road out past, I kind of redid the concept.
How many cars can get in here and packed, John?
What's that?
About how many vehicles can get in here and packed?
I think it's like 19 spaces or 20 spaces. I mean, it's decent, decent sized parking lot.
We'll have, we'll have the full plans for you guys next month.
Yeah, I'll have the whole, the whole thing for you guys, but I was waiting anyway, so.
And I'm... Still waiting.
Still waiting, yeah.
Then, why don't we, let's see, we should have a vote to continue?
Yes.
Could I have a vote to continue this application until our next meeting, which is on June something, or the...
June 1st.
First.
I'll move that, yep.
Motion's been made, motion made in second. Any discussions? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Thank you very much, John. We'll look forward to this.
No, it's a, it's a neat project. I'm glad to finally get it to the end for those guys.
The, the next is an application acceptance. It's for application PL...
Sorry, you skipped the public hearing about the wetland.
Oh, did I do that?
Number five.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm sorry. No Freudian slip intended. The next is revisions to the back language zoning ordinance, 235-17-E, two wetlands and water quality ordinance. This was the present, follow-up in a legal format with the presentation that was made at our, at our last meeting. Who would like to speak to this?
I can just point you to, in the packet that you have, on page three, in red, is the language that is proposed to be added to the ordinance. So, under, what we have right now is within, is, it says, I'm sorry. Water body buffers are defined as all land lying, and then number one, which is in place right now, within 75 feet of the following brooks. Dirkie Brook, Jewett Brook, Blat Brook, Langley Brook, Mellinger Brook, and unnamed brooks designated A through I on the official zoning map. So, we're going to add that to water body, so it would read, the way we would interpret it. Water body buffers are defined as all land lying on number two, we'd add, within 30 feet from the top of the bank on both sides of intermittent and perennial streams. These streams are shown on and will correspond to the latest version of the United States Geological Survey map, which is what was discussed and presented last month. Excuse me.
Excellent. Well, we did spend a considerable time on this at our last meeting. What this will do, what our vote will do is to approve this change and send it to the city council for their approval. And the city council may or may not conduct a public hearing. But I believe at that city council meeting, a presentation similar to one that we heard would be made, if they elect to hear that.
Yeah, I think I'd have to work those details out, but, but yeah, they certainly would, it has to be approved by city council.
Yeah. Okay, given that, do I have a... Is there any general discussion before I ask for a motion?
Is you...
Should I what?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, okay. The public hearing will begin at 7:09. The applicant, we have discussed that. So, are there any taxpayers of the City of Laconia that would like to speak to this ordinance change? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, oh, thank God, 7:10, the clock moved. Then, at this point, we can, we can ask for a motion. Ham, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. A move that the, the revisions that were made to the proposed zoning ordinance, chapter 235-17-E, number two, wetlands and water quality ordinance, prepared by the Conservation Commission, I believe, right?
Yes.
Conservation Commission, be approved and presented to the city council for their review and acceptance.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion, raise your right hand. And any opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention. Excellent. The motion passes, and it will move to the city council.
Now, you can do the application acceptance.
Ah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Application acceptance for PL 2016-0054-SU, Shore Drive, Lexington Drive, MBL 382-1909-5, subdivide one lot into three. Is this application complete and ready for our processing?
It is.
Then, would I have a motion to accept the application?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Nope. Excellent. The motion passes unanimously. And that will, when will that come before us? Mixed in June, do you think?
It should, it should come barring any delays, June 1st.
Under...
We're here.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, then let's back up then. Let's go back here, then. This is a, we'll reopen our continued public hearings, and this is application PL 2016-0015SP, amendment of provincial road, MBL 480-350-4. It's Apple Ridge Apartments, and their application is for waiver request for underground utilities. We need first to accept the, the waiver request. Is, will you ascertain that the application is complete and ready for public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Can I have a motion to accept the application?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. We can open the public hearing, which I do at 7:13. Okay, and would the applicant like to address the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Cronin. I'm an attorney down in Manchester with Cronin, Bissin and Zelinski, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, together with John Roke, who I'm sure you all know well from his projects in the community.
John, is that different than what you submitted already? Okay.
Here are the copies.
Okay.
I've been doing land use and planning and zoning work for approximately 30 years. I have been to this board some time ago, but not in recent years. And I'll just open by saying, these are the types of meetings that I don't like to go to. I feel in some respects, from my youth, making a trip to the principal's office, because I like to come and do things affirmatively. And here, I'm kind of in play on a reconnaissance mission after the fact. We were not involved in the initial approvals, but were called upon by Mr. Roke and the applicant when issues surfaced regarding the overhead power lines. I've reviewed the site plan, and I know the regulations call for all underground utilities. In this particular project, as it was being developed, those of you that are familiar with the site, you know, going down there, there's a large series of overhead lines throughout that neighborhood, low levels, high levels, but it's a pretty intense development with overhead lines. As you go down to the end of the street, Eversource, the power company, is supposed to drop their last pole, and then we're supposed to pick it up and take it underground, according to the regulations and the site plan approvals. I can't say for sure why it happened and why someone didn't contact the planning board first, but it's my understanding, based on communications with Eversource and a letter that's been submitted, that Eversource made the executive decision on the site to add another pole to bridge the wetlands. They brought it a short distance that's over a small wetland there, that sits, you know, on the upside from the bypass highway, ran it over the top, and then it came back into the ground. Other than that small stretch, the entire site is otherwise underground. So, we're talking about a very small area of land in which the wetlands were bridged. My belief is that if they came before you in the original site plan proposal, and Eversource was here and say, hey, this is the way we want to do it, and the only way that we can do it, you probably would have granted the waiver with some protections for the wetland. I did attend the TRC meeting. There were a number of comments and concerns. Naturally, people were upset about it, and I don't blame them for that. And it seemed to be the, the large amount of concern was due to what they anticipated would be repeated problems of the wetland or its buffer to maintain these lines. There was a concern, now that they exist overhead, that there'll be an annual or semi-annual effort to get into the wetlands or the buffer to trim back trees and so forth. We've had Peter Shower go out there and take a look at it. That's not the case here. There's probably no maintenance required of anything there, probably for 15, 20 years, because the path in which these wires are overhead is a pretty clear soysway through, where there's no trees or overheads that are in the general vicinity that will need some trimming. To the extent that sometime in the very distant future they will, that can be done without negative impacts to the wetland. Mr. Shower, in his report, additionally makes some suggestions of some plantings to fill in some of the area. He calls for a couple of species of plants to be added into the area, and I think he renders his opinion that states that there would be no material and negative impact to the wetland. When we look at it, you know, from the consequence of it being happened, and if you had hindsight and had the eraser to go back and do it, no, I certainly would say, or if I was called upon, before Eversource does it, if you have any control, would you at least let somebody at planning know and get back before the planning board before you do it? Unfortunately, I don't have that eraser, and I'm looking at a set of facts where this is done. My visual of it, when I look at it in light of the area, it's a pretty remote site. You know, bounded on one side, you have the bypass, and these overheads are really not visible unless you are really looking for them. Coming down from the access road, these overheads that exist now that were put in are so inconsequential compared to the array of overheads that you have throughout that neighborhood. I think when you look at it, and if you can put to the side of your mind that the pre-approval wasn't requested, I don't think it really distracts from the harmony of the neighborhood, the aesthetics, some beautiful buildings that are there, looks nice. You know, it's a kind of a remote lot, that there's been what I believe is some attractive development. So, for those reasons, we would ask you that you look favorably on the waiver. We did go to Conservation Commission. They also shared some concerns about the process. I get it, I understand it, but I think when they evaluated everything based on the perspective of the impacts to the wetland, the aesthetics, the fact that all of the other utilities throughout the site are underground, they went ahead and they would support, either support or not object to the waiver is probably a better, better way to look at it. I'd ask John if he wanted to add anything that thought would be relevant or helpful.
Yeah, essentially, it's, this entire request is for the single pole. It comes off the, the photo sheets that I put together, like the lower, the lower corner, this is coming down Prebencler Road, it's like the overhead power lines coming out of Prebencler Road. The next one is the last pole, this is actually the last pole on Prebencler Road, and that's where it makes the turn, and it goes to the single pole that goes across the well. And you can see from that last pole that Eversource set, we went underground immediately after that. So, everything else within the development is underground exactly according to plan. There's light bulbs all over the place. I mean, everything's underground within the site. Even though this pole is only maybe 45 feet away from the building, they went underground and underground over to the building from that pole. So, the moment Double D had control of the site and the utilities, they did everything according to the site plan. Everything is underground. We, our initial, our initial submission, we had, we, the conservation, we went to TRC, the Conservation Commission was voting against it, like saying that they didn't, they didn't want to recommend it. That's why we had Peter Shower go out and take a look at it and suggest some plantings, and I went back and actually talked to the Conservation Commission and tried to, you know, garner some support and, you know, try to get, try to get things smoothed over a little bit, so to speak. And the letter that we got from them is basically saying, why, why don't you tell us ahead of time? But now that it's done, the fact that you're putting some stuff in, that's going to be low, low growing and not going to affect maintenance in the future, this is probably the best solution for the, for the process.
Where are the poles? There's one 40, about 45, 50 feet from the building, right? I'm following that blue light. Where's the others? I'm trying to see.
The poles all come, all come down Prebencler Road to this point right here, and then it goes to that single pole.
Just from here?
From there to there.
Just from one pole?
That's the, that's the entire waiver. Yep. The biggest reason why it's, why it's a big deal is it went over the wetland. It went over the wetland and the buffer.
So, there's no pole on...
The reason why the...
Let me just, yeah. So, there's only one pole that's in this area here? And this, the other end is outside over here, some, what is that other pole?
The other pole is all the way down at the end of Prebencler Road.
Okay.
And the reason, if you, if you read the letter from Eversource, this goes back all the way to the Holden Engineering approval that was given in 2006, 2007, the original approval, anyway, for Apple Ridge, before it went into the whole CL&amp;M cycle and everything else. Eversource was saying, what they had shown on their plan could have never been constructed, because the way the underground was showing going through the parking lot, it was making a 90-degree bend, and they're like, you can't install underground at a 90-degree bend.
Who had done that original plan?
Holden.
Holden?
Yeah. And I, I had gone through after, after the fact, because when it went into the CL&amp;M thing, like all the permits expired, everything, everything was gone. Phil Bruliar was doing extensions on it, but he hadn't extended any of the state permits. So, what I did is I went in and had updated the, updated the AOT permit and left basically all the other utilities as-is, and then we had come back to you and got the new approvals when Dick became the owner to get going on construction. But all the utilities, everything was just being carried forward, not knowing in the back, not knowing that Eversource was eventually going to look at it and say, we can't construct what you're showing us.
So, according to the, according to the letter here, Eversource is saying that they put the extra pole in.
Yes.
So, they didn't have to go before DES and delay the project.
Yes.
So, it was okay with Eversource to violate the planning board's directive not to put the pole there, but to go completely underground? So, they basically, Eversource thumbed their nose at the Laconia Planning Board. And they're not even here to defend you guys?
No.
That's pretty bad.
No. We're, we're, we're on the hook board. We're, we're, we're on the hook board, and we're trying to-
It took a lot of work. If you know how much work it took to even get a letter, no, that was difficult in and of itself.
Well, you know, and I also, I got a question. Who's managing the project out there? Is the owner of the project, the developer, is he doesn't have full-time supervision to see what's going on?
Spofford Construction was on-site. Spoff, they were the people that were, they were the site contractor, and Art Rose was over, is directly over them, like he's the general manager of the site.
So nobody was there to supervise that construction?
I don't know, I don't know if, I don't know if they were out there and Eversource said, this is what we're doing, and you don't have a choice, and they, I, I don't know.
It couldn't have taken a day, it had to take several days.
I know.
Okay.
Are there any transformers on that pole?
What's that?
Transformers on that pole?
No, there are not.
I didn't see any, I was just-
Nope, there are not. Um, now that we're kind of, now that we've been dealing with this, I've been hearing from Scott, but you can say whether this is true or not, but this is becoming a theme in Laconia that they're, that Eversource is kind of doing what they want.
Which, which Scott?
Scott McPee.
Okay. Because we have-
Trees are coming down all over the place by Eversource, but-
Sounds like Northern Pass.
Yeah.
Um, I think we have heard from Eversource. They were communicating with Scott Myers, the city manager. He reached out to them. My understanding is that during this time period, at some point, there were some staff changes at Eversource as well that may have added to the confusion on their part.
Well, I know, I know for sure Sid Barton, who was one of the guys that was originally with PS&amp;H when the change, when the change was made over to Eversource, and it was not long after that that he was, that he was gone from Eversource. That's actually a double thing too because he was involved, I think Sid Barton was involved also with Lilac Valley, the poles on Lilac Valley, because there's two extra poles at Lilac Valley too from Eversource.
Which we will at some point see, we have a request for.
Yes. That's the next, that's the next thing. I'm dealing with two of them, actually.
Um, so, so our understanding is that the, you know, the, the staff changeover may have contributed to, you know, whatever happened with Eversource. That being said, it is the, it is the responsibility of the applicant to ensure that their approved plans are followed. But this is what we, this is what we have and what you all have to make a decision on.
Would you explain the, included for the planning board a copy of our regulation? Could you just highlight the responsibilities and authority of this?
Do you want me to give my staff, my whole staff recommendation now with that, or?
Would other gentlemen have joined us?
Yes, let me introduce them. This is Mr. Dick Anagnost.
Welcome.
The principal, the developer, and Mr. Scott Schubert is here. He's also with the development company. I don't want to rehash, but we talked about, a little bit about the history. Mr. McLean had some questions about who was on-site. I think John handled that and how this was able to happen. We've talked a little bit about the disconnect with Eversource and the changing of staff and how this materialized, and we wish we could have an eraser and go back in time, but we can't, and the impacts are relatively modest. If you wanted to add anything, you certainly could, or if you had any questions for Mr. Anagnost, he'd be happy to entertain them.
How much is built out on the project right now?
The entire project is built out.
Entire project.
Building B is already occupied, building A will be occupied in June.
And B is the building for the Lake Region Community College?
Correct.
They're using it as a dormitory?
Yep. And that building B is the one that this pole goes closest to.
Well, why don't we continue? Because if the board has questions, we can ask them anytime.
At your pleasure.
Uh, thank you. Would you then give the staff report?
Um, so the staff report that you have in your packets was drafted in February for the March meeting. As you guys know, this has been continued for several months as things got sorted out and information was gathered. The information we have received since the time we put the packets together and today included the plans that actually delineated what the actual effects of the failure to come and request a waiver prior to are. The photographs we just got tonight, and at this point, I would say that the actual resulting effects of the overhead power lines are fairly minimal. While I do, you know, believe that they certainly should have come and talked to us, our site plan regulations state that changes in utility locations is maybe required by field conditions because we know it happens. There's a provision in our regulations for this. Subject, are subject to written approval of the relevant departments. I, I really think that, that's clear that they should have come back to us and talked to us. However, on page twenty-five of thirty, which I gave you guys, it speaks to utilities being installed underground, and the last sentence is the foregoing requirement shall be imposed at the sole discretion of the planning board. And so that right there tells you all as the board that you do have the right to waive that requirement if you feel that the, the need or is sufficient. I think that the end result of the, of the power lines being overhead as opposed to underground is not ideal, but I don't think that visually or the impact on the wetlands or the site is really hugely significant. But it is at the discretion of the board to, as to whether or not you grant the waiver after the fact. Now, if you don't grant the waiver, they will have to go back and try to install them underground. I don't know if they have a contingency plan for that, that, that you can ask them, but...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So if they had to put them underground, they just would go around the wetlands? Is that how that works?
Well, I mean, there were a couple of different ways they could do it. The, on the approved plans, the previ, the proposed route for the utilities were shown in red.
Yeah, it actually, the proposed route, it actually came down, and this, this was the area where it got, where they, Eversource said they couldn't, they couldn't make the bend, is this turn right here, because there was all the other utilities in the ground also. There was storm drainage and everything else.
So what would they have had to do to make up for the bend?
They would have had to go right through the, they couldn't, they couldn't have come through the parking lot, no matter what. They would have had to either start over, like try to figure out how to get through the pond, they would have had to do an open cut through the wetland and the buffer, or they would have-
And if they, and if they have to do all that, they have to come back with a amendment to the application, a site plan amendment, CUP for effects to the wetlands and the buffers.
Right, but I'm, I'm just asking, if they're going to cut through the wetland?
Yep.
What's going to be the most harmful to the wetland? Doing all that or leaving the wires where they are?
Certainly impacting the wetland directly would be more harmful.
More negative?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because nothing, nothing on the ground has actually been disturbed. The trees have been cut off, but they weren't stumped, like nothing was pulled out. So, like the actual ground has not been disturbed at all by this.
And they weren't special trees, they were just trees?
Just regular trees and-
Okay, thank you.
So why did we require it in the beginning, to begin with?
It's part of our site plan requirements.
Understood, but we have the right to waive it.
Yes, we do.
They didn't ask to waive it.
They didn't ask to waive it.
Their plan included utilities being underground. On-site, they made a field decision to change that.
Well, but the only field decision I see here in the letter from Eversource is they did it so they didn't have to go to DES for a permit and delay the project. That's the only reason they gave.
That's the only reason they, they gave in that letter.
Right. That's it. They didn't say, they didn't give us explanation, they couldn't do a ninety-degree bend and pull, were not able to pull the cable through the conduit. And here's the reason, they basically said, we didn't want to go to DES and get a permit.
I think it was pretty apparent, at least to them and others, that that wasn't feasible. That letter came at, at our urging, you know, at our request, saying, you know, we need you guys to step up and say that this was your decision, and what they're talking about, if they wanted to trench through those wetlands, they'd have to get DES approval to do it.
But, but despite of that, it still looks like trenching through there would have caused more harm to the wetlands.
Right. And that was the original design.
And that was-
We approved it and they agreed to it.
It's '06.
I got that, I got that.
The ninety-degree angle, I think, was the original design.
And it, really, it's not, my, my concern is not the developer. Now, granted, if in a perfect world, you would have had proper supervision on the job, so when the job was being constructed, your supervisor would have said, whoa, 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 wait a second, that's contrary to our site plan, I can't let you do that, I got to go to the planning board. That didn't happen.
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yes.
If I may address that, sir? That is exactly what happened. The contractor contacted the Eversource people, the direct contact that, that he was dealing with. Because I didn't have the benefit of being here, do you mind if I just take a minute and give you a little bit of history as I understand it?
No, no, it's important.
So, um, this was actually brought to light, but it was brought to light at the time that they were doing it. So we put in a work order to Eversource, and we submitted all of the plans as approved by the board. Eversource began bringing the power overhead down the road and changing all the poles out, brought the sector box for building A. We laid all of the underground utilities from the sector box to the building A, which went in first. Then they went to deal with building B. The time they moved on-site in building B, they'd set the first pole and the second pole and made the cut when we were notified by the contractor that Eversource was on-site and that they had taken a different route than what they proposed. The contractor called the Eversource contact, he came to the site, he met with the general contractor, and I know because they notified me by telephone that afternoon that the proposed route was not viable to them because they couldn't make the ninety-degree turn, and they would have had to locate the second sector cabinet inside the, the prime wetland. Okay? The Eversource person who's retired, who we've been trying to locate, made the representation to the contractor that there was an actual job meeting, that the town was present, and that this had been discussed. Okay? So being the developer that I am, I took at face value that it had already been discussed with the town and that it had been accepted by the town. Lo and behold, less than a week later, contractors provided me a letter from Shana that says we went into the wetlands and cut without being, getting the appropriate permission from the planning board, and that we didn't have permission to bring it across that route. Now, maybe it's unbeknownst to this board, I've never faced this any other place, but we can't direct the utility, the developer cannot direct the utility as the route that it intends to take. The direct, the developer brings you the plans, attempts to meet the letter of your regulations, you guys approve it, we give it to them, we pay the money, okay? Then the, the, the utility actually makes the decision as to the best route to go. And I had this conversation personally with Shana where I take it from wherever they leave that final sector box, okay? And I bring it underground from that sector box. And they left the sector box at the end of the pole, at the end of Prebencler Road, and we brought it to building A. They left the sector box beneath the pole that transverse the wetland, and we brought it underground from that sector box into the building. I have no control over whether the Eversource can bury their lines as much as I have no control of the Northern Pass burying the lines from Canada all the way to Deerfield. Okay? It's the same issue. We have no control over that whatsoever. They're going to make that decision. They made that decision, they represented to us that they had cleared that decision with the town. Okay? So if, if it was fine with the town, it was fine with me. It wasn't until a week later that I was notified that it wasn't fine with the town. So I'm here doing my cuppa and following on my sword in front of you and asking for a waiver posted occurring, but the information that I had to make a decision at the time was the fact that it had been cleared with the town and that this is the only way that Eversource was going to put it in anyway. So I don't know if that gives you any additional history, but that's the position that we've been put in. We're in a rock and hard place.
Honestly, I sympathize with you. I sympathize with you. I'm still not, I'm still not happy that we're going to have to give you a waiver because Eversource does not, prefers not to follow the rules.
Candidly, Mr.-
Didn't even have the courtesy to show up here, didn't have the courtesy to provide a letter explaining that.
Candidly, Mr. McLean, I'm inclined to agree with you.
Yeah.
As unhappy as you are, do you think I'm happy standing here asking you for this?
No, I'm sure you're not.
Okay. I'm a-
I think, I think my mind goes right to the power company. And if they take poetic license that way, I mean, and I understand where you are coming from, they're like the technical gurus on that component of your project. And if they think they want to do something, then of course they're going to hopefully advise you or advise the city. Now, I wonder how many times this can occur in the city, in our projects? And if they continually do this, then I think we've become lame ducks here. So not, nothing against you, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I think that you are correcting what you did, what you didn't do, or whatever they told you to do, but I think we have to figure out how we're going to work with this power company or other entities to make sure that this is not done in this manner. Now, I think that, is there any way that we can put a vehicle out there or a mechanism or something that they now have to do? It was leave it up to them, but they now have to apply for any variance rather than just go ahead and do it.
Um, that, that we, I don't know about.
Me neither.
Isn't it the job of the developer to get, or whoever is doing the work, once public service tells them to do that, or they're going to change something, isn't it their job to come back to the city and say?
According, according him?
No, I understand that, I, I understand it, but in the future still, that's what, because I don't see Eversource sending people, I mean, Eversource is kind of doing what they want for the development and then, but I'm sure somebody from Eversource probably did talk to somebody from the city, could have been somebody who was going by in a yellow truck, could have been, could have been anybody.
Charlie, but also what I heard is there's another project out there, similar impact to the situation.
I heard that, I heard that.
So this becomes more-
Who knows who they were talking to, or they-
To, could we just for, to address this issue, say, would this board approve this had they come in for a waiver?
Prior to doing work.
Like, so, let's, let's say they did it the correct way, and if that's the case and you would have approved the waiver, then I say, we make a motion to approve that.
Right, if they gave, if they gave the rationale, they couldn't put it underground because they couldn't pull the wire through the conduit through a ninety-degree bend. Okay.
That's true.
You couldn't, you couldn't straighten it out, you couldn't eliminate the ninety-degree bend. Okay, I can buy that, but for the arrogance of not even responding, that's, that's what I, and this is not about the developer.
Correct.
This is about the power company, and I don't know, we can't hold the developer responsible, but there's got to be something we can do with it.
Well, perhaps, we can discuss that.
We need to have a discussion with that another time.
Jay's been asking-
Send a precedent, precedent by doing this, because if we do, we'll have to do it every single time.
Well, there's, yeah.
Do something so we don't set a precedent.
There's always a risk, any decision that we make, that, that could be influenced. The, with the authority vested in this board though, we do look at all evidence and we can make a singular decision like this. And, and there is something that, that we could do and we could direct that the, the city send a letter to Eversource indicating our displeasure and that we, there are city regulations to be followed and that they are to contact us whenever there is a change in a, an approved plan.
I think that's-
They are a monopoly, and as a monopoly, they have to, they have to work with municipalities that they supply. Yes, Charlie?
Or maybe, maybe the developer just needs to see something in writing. Whenever Source says they talk to somebody in the city, then maybe they need to see something in writing to prove that, instead of just taking it at face value.
Yeah, well, that, that can be included in there also, that Eversource needs to, needs to have a direct communication with the city.
And the developer needs to ask for proof of that?
Yes, yes.
So, but that's still after-
Well, the communications would-
But that's still after the fact, right?
I, I-
No, no, going forward is before the fact.
Someone decides they're going to do it, they, they, they get the writing of it, and they just go ahead and do it. You know what I mean? Because they said they had a meeting and they, and they informed or whatever, and the guy quits, or whatever happened to them.
Well, that's why-
Retired.
That's why we need as a city to send to Eversource a position that they are not to do this, and so that it isn't writing, and that when there is a change to a plan that they are asking for, they come back to the planning director, and then the planning director decides, does it-
Eversource does, or?
Yes, Eversource.
Why would Eversource do that? It's their problem.
It's really both, but, but we have, we have many, many applicants.
Right.
And Eversource is a monopoly.
Right. But Eversource is doing this on their behalf. So, they say, hey, we're making, you're gonna make a change and here's what you have to do. And then they've gotta come here and say, hey, here's the change. But something --
If we'd've been notified, Charlie, that there was a change that was gonna be made?
I understand that.
We would've taken the appropriate actions.
Of course we would.
Secondly, the real salt in the wound is here. I paid them to do this.
Yeah.
They charged me to put me in this position. Okay? The first check was $39,000 and the second one was $28,000. They actually charged me to put me in this position before you tonight.
Welcome to the club.
So, we can, well, we should first decide, I think, on the granting of the waiver. And then, secondly, we can discuss and direct the city through the planning department to send what we want sent to Eversource.
And where's the other one, by the way? Where's the other one that did this?
The second project is Lilac Valley, off of 107.
Yeah. Now, now --
Let's, yeah, we don't have an application before us.
No, we can't discuss that. We do not have an application before us. Different circumstances, different people involved, and we'll need to address that separately within the construct of the application.
Did the power company, just for my own understanding, they added a pole?
They did.
So, they obviously must've thought about this in advance because they didn't bring extra poles. They would've had to go and get an extra pole and all the associated equipment, dig the hole, set the pole. So, it had to be a day or two, anyway.
All of that stuff was on site.
Was on site.
They had just brought all the poles down the road.
But they had extras then?
They took them away. They took away extra poles. They took away extra wire. They took away extra switching.
So, they had more than what they needed.
They brought all the, to supply the job already. Okay? That's what happened. They came to the end pole and then they set a new one to jump over, and then they set one on the other side. And, and you know, Mr. McLean, I understand your concern about the letter that was generated by Eversource, but I have a fine esteemed attorney here, John Cronin. I had meetings with your town manager. I had meetings with Eversource. Your town manager is the one who was actually able to solicit something in writing from them. They wouldn't even give us anything. And the guy that retired, I asked for the address. I asked for the phone number. And they denied me access to the guy that was in charge of the job, their own supervisor, who's retired in Florida somewhere now. So, we tried to prepare just to come to this meeting and it ended roadblocks. It wasn't until your town manager intervened on our behalf that we got anything from them.
It's unconscionable.
I think the issue is what it is, not you.
No.
I mean, I hear you clearly. I mean, they should, there should be a vehicle outside of you that we, you can get in a network, approve, agree, disagree, whatever we may do.
Yeah, we need to be on record with it.
But in your case, I would, I would support the waiver and get you on a positive path here.
Thank you.
Are you making a motion, Bill?
No, no, not yet.
Okay.
The rules of the planning board are that we ask, are there any directed butters that would like to address the planning board on this application? Are there any other taxpayers of the city of Laconia that would like to address the planning board on this application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing at 7:46. Is there any general discretion before I ask for a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
If we set this precedent, are we gonna be faced every single time to go back to it?
Who knows? Who knows? I think there are enough, there are enough individual circumstances in this case that we're fulfilling our direct responsibility to analyze the entire situation and make a judgment call. You know, will some, will any decision that we make come back claimed as a precedent? It could. But in this situation, and enough has been presented by the applicants and their full professional team, and it is on the record, that I personally, and I'm only one voter, but I personally don't have an issue with the fear of precedent setting.
Well, I'm not so much concerned about the precedent of someone coming in after the fact such as the applicant and asking for a waiver because something was done wrong by the power company. It's the precedent that we set with the power company.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Well, I have to, yeah.
All of a sudden, Richard, yeah.
Why don't we first resolve this waiver request and then discuss the, the action that we collectively want to take with the power company?
I, can we make, is there a motion in order?
It's in order.
All right. So, I make a motion that we approve this waiver. And that would be, which one is that? I can't read that.
It's this one here.
Yeah, okay.
It's number two?
I got a different two. This two?
Yeah. Oh, I know why. They have to write in special instructions for the chairman.
Oh, they give you all the special stuff for you.
Yeah. To tell me the things that I forget. So, it's number two.
It's two, but so that's a different two. Okay.
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion that we approve this waiver request and with the thoughts of moving forward with the power company in another way to head off these problems. But the application is PL 2016-0015 SP. And I don't really --
Is the amendment?
I don't see anything on amendments.
Well, it, it is an amendment to the application.
Okay.
Are you looking for conditions, Bill?
I'm looking for them now. Since I move my paperwork around, it's hard to find them all.
Yeah.
I think that's it, right?
I'll make sure I have the right one.
Took it out of sequence and then I --
Yeah, mine.
Is it the one still, March 1st?
That's right.
This one?
Yes. Here it is, Bill.
I would, no, I would, that, so that staff review.
For, yeah.
That staff review does not recommend approval. So, I would say that you, if you wanna make a motion, you could say you recommend approval.
It just has one thing clear.
Yeah. Well, if we recommend approval, we override the staff recommendation by that approval.
And I think you can refer to, where is that? You can refer to just condition six. And if you wanna refer to, you guys didn't discuss the, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring it up, but the conservation commission requested conditions about replanting and treatment in the wetland buffer.
And at, I was at that meeting personally for another subject. I wanted to review the Blackbrook project. And the applicant, through his representative, made a commitment to plant and maintain the plantings through that wetlands area underneath the pole. And in doing that, he met the, and got the recommendation of the conservation commission for that plan.
And that's in here?
Those, the plantings are all low-growing stuff, which will, which makes it even further maintenance rate going forward.
It's not in here, but it is in the --
We don't have a plan for that. So, I don't think I have to say that, but based on the agreement to do plantings and low impact, I guess, on the, on the environment, I would recommend, and there's a project completion date of April 5th. Is that correct?
I would change that to --
Planner Visions, that is?
Planner Visions, June 1st.
This is April 5th.
Yep. I would change that. That's a mistake.
What are we changing that to?
June 1st.
June 1st, okay.
It was a mistake because this was originally done for March 1st.
Yes. Yep, yep.
And that would be my motion.
And it includes as-built plants.
Yeah, well, yeah. As it is stated here, all right.
Is, are questions out of, out of order?
Let's have a second first and then, motions have been made and second discussion, yes, sir.
To the applicant, did you say that the building is occupied?
Building, the building serviced by the service that we're talking about is occupied. It is leased out to the community college and their students and RAs and staff are currently occupying the building.
So, the building is powered and it's occupied?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you felt confident enough to occupy the building?
Well, they gave us a certificate of occupancy. They're, they're kinda --
Even though the, even though the site plan was in violation?
Yeah, there are two separate issues, we believe. I don't know.
I don't know if it was a temporary CO or permanent CO.
It's a TCO.
Okay. It's, so it must've been temporary based on going through this process and the outcome of it.
And you still have one building that's not occupied yet. So, we're still in the process.
Yeah. So, the worst that could happen, if we denied it, they'd have to shut the power off, rerun the lines, and then bring the power back on.
It's not unusual for us to issue temporary COs while, while things like this get worked out. Not that we come across things like this often, but while they finalize conditions or landscaping or drainage or things like that. So, yeah, a temporary CO is not unusual, just so the project can keep moving.
So, how's the power for the other building? Where's that gonna go? Do you know?
It's, it's already in and it is underground. They actually placed the power for building A first.
Okay, I see.
Okay? And all of our wires are underground. The overhead lights, the powers to the building. Even the power to building B from their sector cabinet is underground. The issue that you have is from the end of the roadway, jumping over the wetland to the sector cabinet is the issue at hand. All of the stuff that we were to install is underground.
Excellent. I can almost see it transpiring over there, you know? But that's my motion.
Okay. The motion's been made. Second, we've had discussion. Now, we, okay. So, motions made, discussion, we had discussion. And I'll call the question. All those in favor of granting the waiver, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we have all learned a great lesson here about dealing with Eversource. Well, thank you very much for your time. And listen, I apologize to make you stay here late in order to hear this kind of an issue. No, this is very important. The development which you have done has made a significant improvement to the city of Laconia. And the arrangement you have with the community college is enhancing that as an educational opportunity. It's very, very important to us here. And apart from this issue, I know, I personally know of no others, and congratulate you for the, the two buildings that you did put up. And would encourage you to buy other land and put up more buildings. We're working on another one. We'll be back to see you. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be back to see you on another power pole, so.
So, why don't we discuss then, generally?
I would recommend that any discussion of any interaction with Eversource go under other business at this point.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay.
It's fine with me. We're not gonna forget it. Where are we on this agenda, any?
New business.
New business. It was indicated here that the retained corporate counsel for the city wanted to discuss possible upcoming project procedures. And he has indicated that he does not want to do it at this time?
Yes. He will probably be back to talk to you guys, possibly June, possibly July. There's some other timelines that we're working with, but, but he could not make it tonight after all.
And I understand unofficially that this is in relation to the city parking garage, a specific project, not in a general, what we have, what we do under our site plan approvals. Then old business? We don't have any old business? Planning department reports?
The first thing I want to bring your attention to is the bright pink sheet in your packet. The planning board meeting was originally scheduled for June 7th. It will now be on June 1st, which is a Wednesday. It's an off night for you all. But I will not be here on June 7th, so we need to move the meeting.
Well, then the director should be here.
I don't know what is --
Or the assistant director.
Going to be happening at that point. So, as a contingency plan, we just moved the date just to ensure that we would have staff here for you guys.
Excellent.
The second thing I want to talk about is, first, I want to thank you for your patience as we muddled through a couple of the staff reviews. We, as you know, are a little shorthanded down in the planning department with Shanna having left. And if you weren't aware, we also had Christine Snow. She was our zoning technician. She retired just about three days before Shanna left. So, we're at about half capacity right now in the office. The staff that is left has stepped up and have been extraordinary in taking on more work and being very helpful. So, I wanna give them a pat on the back for that. We also have a contractor onboard to help with some of the plan reviews. His name is Gerald Coogan. You may have noticed his name on the staff reports that you got. We're still working, you know, obviously he's gotta learn our ways. And I think I missed a couple of things on the staff reports when I reviewed them and edited them. But Jerry is at the office right now, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, mostly Wednesdays, occasionally Tuesdays, to do those plan reviews. He is doing planning board plan reviews, minor site plan, plan reviews. He is helping to prepare the zoning board packets for completeness. And he might be helping with the special events and motorcycle review applications. For the most part, I've been doing them, but he might step up and take on some of that work. So, hopefully by next month, we'll have some of those kinks worked out and the staff reviews should have everything where they should be for you guys. If you have any questions about that, please let me know.
Yeah, how's the search, how's the search going?
I, I don't know. The posting closed on April 8th. If you have questions, I would recommend that you direct them to Mr. Myers.
I have a question. I spoke with Chris Snow because I was on the zoning board first. She told me she had been hired by the temporary company for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Is that still the case?
Chris was a full employee before she retired. We do not have a temp zoning technician right now. So, Jerry's, Jerry's helping with a little bit of that, but for the most part, my, I'm, I'm doing a fair amount of the work. Kalina's doing quite a bit of the work. We're all pitching in to answer customer questions. Paul Merritt in the code department is going to start assisting with writing some zoning violation letters, just to kinda spread the work a little bit because we are spread pretty thin.
I'm personally knowledgeable about Jerry. He's worked as a consultant for the planning commission for many years and has developed, he was the staff person responsible for the comprehensive economic development strategy, SEDS document that applies to the, to the region. And secondly, he did the granite state futures project, which applies to the entire area too, which has been incorporated with the other planning commissions. So, he's extremely, extremely competent. And, and I think we're very fortunate that he was available to be a consultant to Brandy at, at this time.
He may be here at the June 1st meeting. We did get a number of plans in today for review, so he may be at the June 1st meeting to, because he will be the one doing the main review of it to speak to and give the recommendation or the report. We'll see how that works out. So, you may see him.
And he'll be, he'll be with us if the Langley Cove project is presented to us. Because that, as you all know, that's, that's a significant elephant. Excellent. Anything else you'd like to?
Yes. The master plan, I kinda want to give you guys an update on where we are with that. We now have draft chapters for economic development, natural resources, a first blush draft chapter of the transportation section, and a very rough, a very, very rough draft chapter for the land use section. Those four chapters will be the topic of discussion at the community action summit, which will be held on Monday, May 23rd. I just nailed down the dates and made the announcements. I'll be sending emails and invitations to everyone. Monday, May 23rd, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. That will be at the Hewitt Technical Center. If you haven't been there, I went there for the first time last week to check out the space. And it is a very nice facility. I think it'll be a great opportunity to get the community in there for folks who haven't seen it as well. So, we'll be discussing those four topics at this community action summit. We're calling it a community action summit because we're actually gonna start talking about action items. We're actually gonna come up with a to-do list that will go in the master plan, that will tack on to those four chapters, about what we as a city, what actual things we want to do to accomplish our goals that have been laid out. Again, I'll send you guys official invitations, but it is up. If you're on Facebook, Reimagine Laconia, posted it on Facebook. We're asking people to register on Eventbrite. You don't have to. We just kinda want to get a head count. So, if you could do that and invite people and encourage people, that would be great. The, after that event, at some point, we will start discussing the last three chapters, which will be housing, community services and facilities, and historic and cultural resources. Those last three, those are the last three chapters. And once those are done, the entire document will be brought to you as a board for your approval and acceptance.
And once the, it comes before us and the last page is a signature page of each member of the planning board. So, I would like to ask if you could, if your schedule allows to be there on the 23rd, to stay actively involved in this project. Because your name's gonna be on the -- to stay actively involved in this project, because your name's going to be on the line.
If you have any questions, or you want a preview of the draft chapters or anything like that, let me know. I'll be happy to send them to you. One, two more things I just want to touch base on. Just recently, the state changed an RSA about accessory dwelling units, which we here in our zoning ordinance refer to as accessory apartments. Right now, our ordinance limits the size of an accessory apartment to 400 square feet. The RSA changes that to a ratio that can be adopted by the city and a bunch of other rules. That comes into effect June 1st of next year, 2017. So, at some point, you all will be seeing a revised section of the ordinance on that topic sometime in the next six, eight, nine months, depending on how things go.
But in defining square footages, does it define what it should contain?
There's a few things about where it can be located on the property that you can choose, the municipality can choose to incorporate or not. Things like who may or may not live there, what your limitations are for that.
So, it'll be a separate dwelling, a separate building?
It could be located...
No, it's have to be the same building.
It could be located...
Well, I thought it would be, but I doesn't know what I'm hearing.
It may...I have to look through, you know, we'll have to see how that works out. I think what'll happen is, my guess is, you guys as the board will request that the zoning task force take a look at that.
My reading of the regulations is that if the municipality allows for, on the same piece of property, a separate unit, like a standalone garage with the dwelling unit above it, it's our call as to whether we will allow that within the city or not. But attached to the actual building itself, the RSA's dictate what will be done.
I wonder if they'll allow it in condominium yet.
We'll have to explore that. I just wanted to give you guys...
I thought you said single-family dwellings.
I think it does have to be single-family dwellings, but we'll explore that. I just wanted to let you guys know that that was coming down the pipe. That's been a hot topic of discussion lately, so...and I think that's it.
Okay. John, did you have...
Yeah, you know, sometimes you get good thoughts on the drive home, but I know you were struggling with the communication for Eversource, and I recalled the thing we did with the water utility. And you may have already thought of it, but I figured rather than keep it to myself, if you were to write a letter to them stating that they're not to deviate from any approved site plan unless the property owner shows them an approved amendment or something of that nature and copy it to the PUC, usually when I'm dealing with the utilities, a copy to the PUC in a record gets their attention much more than it does a letter from me. So, I just thought I'd make that suggestion to you while you have your discussion on what to do.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Excellent, then. Liaison reports the planning commission. Do any of you have elm trees? Excuse me, ash trees. There is a borer coming up through. It started in other parts of the country. It's coming up through Concord, and we are in a quarantine area here, and that, in essence, what it will mean is that all ash trees are going to be killed by this insect. So, that the...there's only one injectable solution, and it's like $12 for every inch of diameter. It's wickedly expensive to do it. And so, the main way of slowing this predator down is that there is a regulation that firewood cannot be moved more than five miles from its origin, because this insect can survive in firewood. And if you move the firewood, you cut a tree down here and you take it up to Moltenboro, you place it in Moltenboro, you could be infecting Moltenboro. So, it's ash trees. It's a terrible thing. Showed pictures of towns that just obliterated beautiful street trees, gone. And not only do you lose the tree, you stand the cost of removing the tree, which is a double...
Why is that not new to me? I mean, I thought this book was out five, six years ago. It's been out for a while.
It's been coming, and they discovered it in Concord, and then it's moving into New Hampshire.
Weren't there some preventive type of things that the communities were sort of going to do?
No, it's only this injectable...
Or something like...
No.
They cut down the trees and burn them. That's all the silly way they try to get rid of them.
That's all you can do. There's a spray or something.
Yep. So, ash trees, we're going to hear more about it, I'm sure, as it moves. But Bellknap County is a quarantined area because of our proximity to Concord, and so if you have any ash trees, you're going to lose them, and please don't lug them very far. That's about it. Any from the conservation commission?
All right. So, Marnie Schultz and Lisa Moran assisted with the annual Girl Scout Earth Day event at the Laconia transfer station on April 23rd. They spoke about pollinator plantings and assisted with some additional plantings to enhance the pollinator garden already in place. The ConCom is working closely with Public Works to GPS all invasive plants at the transfer station to show them on the education kiosk, which is due to be installed soon. So, when you go to the transfer station, you'll be able to pull up a map and see what we've got going on. The conservation commission is also working closely with the Bellknap Conservation District, and they are working with the Key Club volunteers in early May to plant a rain garden at Tardif Park. So, that'll be a really neat installation so folks can go and see what a rain garden looks like and how they might want to think about putting something like that on their property. So, when residents have questions on rain gardens, they can go take a look at it and see how it works. A joint Guilford/Laconia Conservation Commission public hearing will take place on Wednesday, May 18th. They're going to present the final results of the Black Brook geomorphological and watershed study, which, as you know, has been an ongoing project that they received a pretty sizable grant for. So, it's a very exciting step for them. This was undertaken to protect water quality in Pogus Bay, which, as you know, is our drinking water. The conservation commission will also be working with the Winnebago Watershed Association to study and combat the spread of the cyanobacteria plumes in preparation for potential plumes this summer. Thank you.
The Black Brook study, I went to their meeting with the head of preliminary presentation, and it is absolutely fascinating how far that dang brook goes back up in, through Guilford and up into the mountains. And what has happened that causes this shootout into Pogus Bay, which is state water. So, we've got Guilford is involved, Laconia's involved, and the state's involved, is that if you take like a garden hose and you put your thumb over it, a weak stream becomes strong. Well, that's what's happened to this brook as it's come down through, past Lowes and past the bank and past CVS. They've got culverts, they've got this. The bank size has gone from this to this, and it's constrained, and that thing is whipping through there. And what needs to be done is more of a natural revision back to, that you need to have wider areas so that when the water rushes down through springtime or whatever, flooding condition, it can spread out, and it deposits this stuff on the banks, and then it recedes back into its channel and goes down. And that would keep all this stuff from going out into Pogus Bay.
Are the culverts for that, are they owned by the city?
They're owned by a whole variety of people. When you look at it, it's extremely complex.
We went through that drainage situation in depth, and it started from the...starts up with the Wal-Mart is up in that area.
Yeah, even beyond it.
Well, it was beyond it. You know, that's up near Lily Pond, you know? And so, they reassessed the drainage from that, those two developments, CLOs and whatever. So, a lot of it had to do with that and their ability to slow it down. Now, where some of it is basically Guilford, we didn't have too much of an impact on that. But what we did do with the expansion on Wal-Mart, we had them look at the other side of it, which was Lily Pond, and drain out in that area, because there is a wetland there anyway. But some people were reluctant to drain into Lily Pond, I mean, that wetland area. But ultimately, that was partly the solution. But it all stems from the development of it. I think certain holding areas and stuff like that were basically undersized over the years when those were designed.
And Wal-Mart did contribute, I believe it was $10,000 to this study, and other businesses along there did too, but it's very complex.
It's been a great collaboration between the two, between us and Guilford.
Yeah. Now, the issue will be, once they have determined, which they have, what's causing the problem, the issue's going to be what the devil to do about it. There's so many property owners involved, and a motivation for a property owner to make a substantial investment is like, where's their return going to be on that investment? So, it's very important. But if you can't attend it, it would be good because it's done very professionally. City council, David Bounds, is not here. He called in, he had another commitment this evening. Other business, is this where we can talk about?
If you would like to.
Yeah, I think we would like to. What...this was interesting, the comments that the lawyer made here of us, if we decide to ask or direct a letter be sent to Eversource, a copy of it be sent to the PUC. I think that's very good. That's their regulator.
May I say something?
Yeah.
You know, I feel bad for these guys, but the reality is, they dropped the ball, in my mind, because you can't just make a major plan that you guys approved and by somebody saying, oh, yeah, we talked to everybody and everything's cool. You know, that's bush league.
Yes.
It's the ask for forgiveness later.
No, what happens is, a plan is done.
I get that.
Let me explain you the process.
Yeah.
A plan is done.
Yeah.
We look at it, it looks good, we approve it, whatever. Then it has an allegory. It goes to, ultimately, it goes to the power company. They come up with their overlay on that, supposedly their overlay, but sometimes they just implement it.
That was a field change.
Yeah, but they...
No, not just...
But either way, they changed it. It's up to the...
Right.
It's up to the developer to say, okay, you want to make a change, let me do what I got to do, which is come back and get the waiver.
No, I agree with you.
If you wake up and the polls there, this is what your situation...
But they didn't wake up and it was there. They didn't, like you said...
They had a conversation. They meant it to them.
That didn't happen in one day.
Yep.
They work fast, but that's a couple days. And again, for the developer, I mean, we've all...well, I'm sure a lot of us have been in that situation where somebody says, oh, yeah, don't worry about it, it's cool. You know, I go through it all the time in my job, and somebody says, yeah, it's all set, don't worry about it. But I got to have proof of that, yeah? So, that's really the bottom line.
You know, the other side of it, the other side of the letter says specifically from the power company, they did it so as not to delay the project. Well, you sort of got tenants in, working under a temporary CMO. He needed to get those tenants in there. So, he would not...he didn't want the power company to go to DES and get a permit. So, I kind of have to agree with Charlie that they're a bit complicit in this whole thing.
But it sounds like it was a good thing not to go to DES, because this was the best formula for not disturbing that wetland.
I believe you can make a 90-degree turn with a power line underground with a junction box.
Yeah.
They bury those junction boxes.
I would caution you all against discussing the situation regarding the waiver request too, too much, because you had the public hearing and you made a decision.
No, we're not, but we're talking about as far as Eversource.
Yes, yeah, so certainly discuss, you know, how you may want to address that.
Without reprimand.
I just think that, you know, this group here, when you make, when you give out the okay for stuff, they need to just be really sure that if there's any changes, no matter who it's from, Eversource or Public Works or some water company, that they've got to make sure before that goes forward, even if it's going to delay them or whatever, they've got to come back. They ask for emergency meetings, right? Have you had that? No? Okay.
That can be. No, it can very well be.
So, they've just got to come back and...
You know, I think you're onto something. I think what it should, you know, maybe what we got to hone in on is, from the point on which we approve something, and then they go to an Eversource or whoever they go to, even the water, and then they do their alteration to it, or they say, we're going to zig and set a zag, and they do it. I'm not sure what we have in the system that flags this to us or does not allow them to do it. That's been...
I know, but that's...
I know, I'm just saying, that's where we got to...
The guy says, oh, yeah, we talked to somebody from the city.
No, but that's been a way of life for these people.
Maybe it's part of our institutional knowledge here too, that the next time a subdivision comes in with an underground utility plan, we grill them and ensure that Eversource has signed off on this prior to our approval.
Or they know that...
It doesn't matter. They can, if they can make the field change, they not have to come back to us.
No, no, Eversource doesn't come back. Those other people have to come back.
Developers do.
Absolutely. So, Eversource makes the change, doesn't necessarily tell the developer in time, the developer's on the hook, he's got to come back to you. Eversource is off the hook. Well, they were never on the hook. It's not their project.
Perhaps we can do this, perhaps we can ask Brandy to talk with our city manager and our council, expressing what we want to do prior to making it a formal motion, so that we can get their guidance as to how to do this, how to keep Eversource on the hook, that they're not to deviate from an approved plan without an authorization from the city.
The project guys are the ones on the hook.
Yes.
Eversource is working for them. They're paying Eversource.
Yeah, no, my concern is that we have so many applicants, and that he may home in and not do this again, but we've got Charlie, we've got Tom, we've got Dick, we've got Harry, and if we communicate to Eversource...
When they come forward, don't you tell them that...you tell them, if you make any deviation to this, you got to come back, no matter whose fault the deviation is, right?
That's implied.
No, no, no. We have, there's administrative...
Right.
You know, they can do things administratively on site.
Well, yeah, but you're saying they got to come back.
And I think that's where, some of this falls into all of that.
So, we do have in our regulations that changes...
You're in the right church, you got to get to the right pew in the right seat, but you're getting close.
We do have in our...we do have in our site plan regulations that field changes are acceptable. They do need to be approved by, at the very least, the departments, the city departments.
And you would do that in writing?
When they're brought, yes, yes. And when they're brought to our attention, at our discretion, we will either approve said field change and say, we'll capture and easel, or we say, no, this is big enough that you need to go to the planning board. Usually, it's things like you moved a catch basin three feet, or you redesigned a swale or something like that, because once you get on there, you know, the site maybe might not be exactly as you engineered for. So, it is in there. You know, I guess sometimes we get new developers who maybe aren't, you know, quite as familiar with our process. That's not, you know, excuses, but it is what it is. So, we try to keep lines of communication open. Scott McPhee goes once a week to all of our active construction sites and checks things, and that's how we found this out. He was on his regular Friday site visit, and he came back with a report for us. So, for the most part, if things are happening, we do catch them within a week or so, you know? So, we try, we as a department try to stay on top of things. It doesn't mean we're going to catch things, you know, right away if they're...
Maybe the power company...
But...
I mean, these people pay a lot of money to the power company to do what they do. Maybe they got to provide a bond or something that they're going to adhere to the...
Well, also, at the same time, a developer could say, all right, if we...they could make a decision right there on the spot and be like, yeah, in order to do this, this is going to cost another $100,000 because what you had in a plan...
Yeah, that's always out there.
And they could be like, hey, put the lines across.
Yeah, that's always out there.
You know, so, it's, that's where it comes down to whoever's inspecting this would say, all right, we got to stop, come in, and then that's why, when you're looking at a waiver like this, you have to judge it on the merits of that. And in this case, I feel like we had too much hearsay in a conversation. I don't want to discuss that, but how do we avoid hearsay? We didn't, you mentioned setting a precedent. I wouldn't want to set a precedent in saying, like, what kind of proof do you need to have that this would have been a hardship and that the mistake was made? You know, we should also require proof of that kind of...
Well, you understand everybody...
Or that could have been done as a case before it got here.
There's a bond to put up. Every developer has to provide a bond, and that is 10% plus 10% of the project implementation, the road, the infrastructure. Now, if we felt that he didn't do something or a developer didn't do something, and we want to correct it, we can exercise that bond. The bond is usually a letter of credit from a bank, or it's a physical bond. We get the physical bond aspect of it.
Letter of credit or cash?
Huh?
Letter of credit or cash?
Well, we had a bonding that we voted on. Check your notes. We voted on the bond because I was adamant about that, and we did that within the last year. We came out with a bond, allowing a bond as long as the bonding company was from the state of New Hampshire. So, double-check that.
Okay.
That's an element.
It was something like that.
We had a discussion, I don't remember the results.[1790.33] We had a discussion, and I remember the results.
I'm.
Only for street acceptance.
I'm sorry?
Only for street acceptance. I think it was in, I think it was during the street acceptance discussion.
Yeah, right.
Only.
And it was the city that, that decided that.
The city.
It didn't decide it.
We can, we can.
We changed that. We changed that. We changed it to a bond. Because we would say a.
For a street acceptance, right?
No, for, on, no, on the project. We would say, da-da-da-da, we approved that. Bond provided by a given date. That was a misnomer. That misled people to think they could provide a bond. What they were really saying is you need a letter of credit. So we had a couple hurdles with that. And then we went back and we said, well, we're gonna do a bond. We can do a bond. The problem with the bond was at the time, we did bonds in this city. Most towns do bonds. We didn't because there was a, a situation that had gone on. They want to exercise the bond.
And they were out of time.
And what they did was they had to go to North Carolina, they get there on time, and they couldn't get there within the 12 hours. So we ended up coming up short as a, as a city. So what we should have done in that case, shame on us, was think about what we wanted to do and get a plan in place two or three days before we called on the bond. But we do have a bond. We do legally, we do have a bond. Double check the, the minutes of the meetings. That is what we voted on with, about a year ago.
But Phil, we can design that bond so it's due upon what we say. You don't want to, you don't want to go through this whole ring and roll all over again. Because I went through that once before, and I realized now on, you make it, as soon as, as soon as they come to us and say, they're doing this and, and the plan says this, then you should be able to call on it right then and there to get it corrected.
If in fact, they don't fulfill the contract, let's say, the plan, we can call in the bond, and we can do it ourselves. For example, if, if a, if a developer does not put the top coat on the road, or he doesn't put a sidewalk, and or he stops halfway through the, the project, we can call in their bond, and we have our, say, DPW, whoever, they're gonna let it outsource it to. And then they can implement the, the cost, whatever's the value of that bond. It could be $50,000, it could be $60,000. But they could then take that next, they have the right to use that money.
Which we have done in the past for site stabilization.
Well, that's, so we're talking the same thing. So the bond.
Do you want to get involved with running underground ground lines through wetlands?
No, you're trying to protect, you're trying to protect, you're trying to protect, you know.
I'm not sure the bond really applies to this one. Only because.
Why?
The, EverSource acted as a subcontractor to the developer. But, but wait, wait, wait.
The contractor.
Let him finish.
It's, they're a monopoly. He couldn't go to anybody else. He had no choice. So the subcontractor basically screwed the developer. Why? Because he was the only game in town. And he does exactly what he wants to do. So I'm not sure that by attaching the bond, we do ourselves any favor.
It's a bond, not to the individual contractor, but to the power company.
Can you finish?
I don't think, you know, we don't, I don't think we do ourselves any favor by making it even tougher on the developer. Because he's got no control. He's got no control over, over EverSource. If we don't put our draw line in the sand with EverSource, they're gonna keep doing it to the developers, and we're gonna get frustrated, we're gonna start laying on more regulations on top of what we already do. It's just gonna make it harder for developers.
So the question is, what's the, how, how do we determine what the, 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 the draw line on the sand?
I think Warren's suggestion is right, is what we do is we have the city manager contact our attorney and find out what he thinks we can do. And if it means writing a letter to the PUC in protest, utility's gonna listen to that more than they're gonna listen to us.
Yeah, I think that's an important step.
What are we protesting?
We're protesting the fact that they changed the conditions of a site plan approval.
They better do it.
All we can do is trust what he's saying. We don't know. But we have to assume he's a reasonable man. He hired an attorney and an engineer to come back and represent him to try to solve it.
The developers have to see something in writing.
Very expensive.
Well, well, what we'll do, you know, sequential subdivisions here before the board, all of us are frustrated by this. And, and as we develop our approval here, we'll add in there. We'll just make that stronger language. And anything that's going to have underground utility support will just require that EverSource has signed off on that plan prior to.
And if there's a change, if, if they want a change.
The applicant has to come back to us.
They have to, they have to have something in writing. If not.
Yes.
They have to have something in writing that.
Yes.
Somebody has approved that change.
Yes. Everything has to be in writing that, that we generate.
Can we also say somewhere in the.
Usually when I bring in the drawings, there's a plan that shows where those underground utilities are going. So did we approve something?
Again, even if we approved it.
But my question is, did.
Yes, we did. It was page 15 or something like that.
Yeah, did we approve it going through the wetlands?
No, no. Does it make sense for us to say in our approvals, and maybe it's not necessary, maybe it's implied, that the developer, without limitation, without exception, is responsible for the proper work of his subcontractors, whether it be a utility, a monopoly, whatever?
Of course.
Yeah, but do we need to say that? Because he basically came to us, and we assume he's a reasonable man. He said, you know, the utility that made that decision on their own, I didn't really have much to say about. They said they talked to the town, it was okay. I'm just saying, belt and suspenders, if we say specifically in the approval, don't come back to us. You are fully responsible for your subcontractors. Period.
Would you think about that, too, and, and ask our?
I'll check with legal counsel.
Legal counsel as to what we can do to.
I would think they would be.
Because we, we need, as we're doing, we're learning, you know. You, you fall in a bucket and you learn how not to fall in that bucket again.
Yeah, you know, but it's, it is funny because, well, we won't talk about.
How can you, I, I, it's hard to, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a punitive thing that they self-police in some manner at some level. Because we're not gonna be able to police that. We're not. Because the bottom line is, someone goes on on site, whether it's the power company or the contractor, someone goes on and say, put the pole over here, we'll worry about it later on. So you, if it's punitive at some level.
I know.
And if it's the power company, the power company's gonna say, well, we can't do that because did you get, Mr. So-and-so, did you get approval on that for your, you know, your plan shows this? But now, there's gotta be a way that they self-police. Because we're not, we're not on site. That all can happen in a day, like you said.
Yeah, no, there's, there's one other thing, and we, and maybe shame on us, is we kind of fall back on our, on our, our site plan regulations probably more than we should. We should have looked at it and said, okay, we want the power underground, that's what the regulation says. But there's a wetland over here. Do we really want to make them do that?
Well, that was my question. Did we approve that?
No, if you, no.
I know.
It wasn't an approval, it was just a requirement.
It was to go the other way. But in order to go the other way, they had to do this wicked angle.
So what we approved was the way they should have done it.
Yeah.
But as you all know, there's a delicate, under case law, planning board members and planning board themselves not being experts in the particular field, we have to give deference to the certified engineers, to the certified power people. There has to be deference to that.
Yeah, and they agreed to it.
Yeah. Well, you've heard it all. Would you come back next meeting with some kind of a draft letter?
Well, you won't be here.
I, I will. That's why we moved it.
That's why we moved it.
Oh, okay.
I will do some research and, and see what I can figure out for, for you guys.
Excellent. Anything else on this subject? New?
I was just gonna say to something like this, too, this was an obvious catch. A lot of things like this are buried and you can't find them. So it was something that they were able to catch in a week. So it, it's a sore thumb.
Yes.
So think of all those things that always do get buried. This could have very well been thought, thought through. That, I mean, it was a lot of hearsay. And that's the only thing that, that is irritating about it, that you didn't have exactly an expert opinion. You had a lot of, I'm sorry, what, what can we do at this point? You know, and, and that's the precedent we don't want to be in.
Yes.
And that was my only concern about an issue like this. And if, again, it goes back to, okay, let's, if we look at each issue separately and say, would this waiver make, would it be logical? And I think they should go through the, the whole, whatever it would have taken to get a waiver is what we should expect as a board for the original. If they're going to make a mistake like that, they need to do all the background research as if it wasn't the original waiver at that moment. That would be my only concern. Did they have all that background to come here for this?
Do you have another one coming up that we, we have wind of? Is the board gonna have all the litany of events that took place with that particular one?
Well, Brandy.
We're not discussing it, and I'm not discussing it, but I mean.
That's Brandy's role as the interim director, to instruct them as to what is necessary before they come.
No, I mean, I mean, the other one that's coming up.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's her role to instruct them. You must do this, you have to do that.
No, but do we have the historical, does that?
We don't have anything. We don't have any.
Is that coming to the board?
We have no application yet.
Okay. But when it comes to the board, will we have the historical sequence of events?
I.
What we know, what we don't know, who try to contact to, all that kind of stuff.
I can certainly try to get that from.
That'll be good if we can. That's helpful.
To be entirely honest, we tried to get a lot of information, you know, about this other one. Sometimes we have to bring you guys what we have.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, it's stalled at our level. So.
We're not looking at you. I'm saying.
No, no, I understand. I mean, I will do my best to ask that they prepare it as if it was a before the fact instead of an after the fact.
I mean, you ask if they got a letter that said, well, you know, we did talk to so-and-so, say, from.
Yep.
From the utility company, or they have a name, associated with, that is really, you know, that bridges the gap, I think.
Charlie?
I'd love to have the answer, and it doesn't matter what the cost difference was between underground, 90-degree turn, all that stuff, and the pole and the wires over.
Oh, that was more, that was easier on the power company.
Of course.
No.
Easier on, somebody's paying for that.
Of course.
So again, my question is, the power company's just giving you a bill. I'm just curious what the cost difference was between the two.
Yeah. Well, the power company, you prepaid.
Huge. Yeah. No, that's a good point. There's only so far we can get it. Yeah, no, no, I agree with you.
Charlie, I've been through a lot of this, and you prepaid, they give you a price on your plan.
When the check arrives.
You prepaid them, and then they come out and do the work.
Well, if there's a big difference in the job, I'd be looking to say.
Well, there's a big difference.
What's the difference here? Am I getting a refund?
Well, I would think there's a big difference in the cost. That's my own personal opinion.
And I'd be looking for a refund. Otherwise, if there was a big difference, they might be looking for a bigger bill from you, a check from you. That's all.
Well, why don't we, this is good. Why don't we move, last subject is approval of the minutes of April 5th. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of April 5th?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion made, second. Any discussions? See, now, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say, I'll raise the right hand because we're on subdivision.
Okay.
I'm abstaining.
I am, too.
Two abstains, okay. You don't, under, under.
It's four in us.
Under the rules and regulations, I'm not sure if it's ours or the state's, but just you don't have to abstain. If you reviewed them, you can vote on them, you don't have to.
But I wasn't here to, how do I know they're true?